And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 19th Board of Selectmen meeting. All selectmen are present save Mr. Shea who should be here momentarily. We're going to move things around a little bit and take number seven first. Mr. Ballantyne, short-term note issuance for public safety facility. Mr. Ballantyne.
Good evening. So as you, the board may or may not recall, last May of 2017, we rolled over some short-term notes for four different issuances at the time. The Burnett House, DPW tank project, recreation lights, and a fire truck. Those will be coming due May of 18. In the meantime, we are ready to issue, since the closing is tomorrow, I do hope so, we're ready to issue some short-term notes. First, short-term notes for the public safety project. So we have an issuance that I'll be having you sign tonight, vote to accept the bonds, and sign all these lovely documents. For those of you who haven't done this before, it's a real treat. There's probably about 20 of them, 20 signatures. A lot of, a lot of sign-offs. So that amount is $7,760,000. We got it at a, the sale's already been done, so it was a 1.3% interest rate. It's really competitive, it's very good. That will come due also in May of 18, along with these other issuances, and we've known all along, we're going to combine these outstanding short-term notes and permanently bond them in May. So along with that, we will be going through the more formalized process in the spring of getting a bond rating, which we hope we can maintain, and then issuing the long-term notes for 30 years for the public safety building for this piece, and then the various other terms for those other projects. Two of the projects, as you know, the Burnett and the fire truck are paid for by different funds other than the tax levy, so just note that. With that, I guess, that would be it for now. The only other comment I'd make is this $7 million and the other projects will show up on the tax bills next year in FY '19. So it's about $600,000 for the public safety building. I think it's in, it'll be in my budget presentation, but the, these amounts, the first payments will show up, so, just so everyone's aware of that. And at that time, in the spring, we'll probably know better with cash flows, with more design work and possible construction work, we'll know if we need to issue any amounts at that time also. We have some options later on down the road, so it's a little early to talk about those since we don't know a specific cash flow yet, but by, by spring or late spring, we'll have an idea on that. So with that, I just, we just need to vote to accept these bonds and then we sign away.
So Brian, just in, did you, I'm sorry, and I missed it. Did you explain what the, pretty much at the total, this amount that you're asked, being asked to approve tonight, pretty much consists of the known costs at this point for the public safety piece? Obviously, the land, the land deal with St. Mark's, the OPM contract, as well as the architect contract. So that's, that's pretty much, you know, those are our known costs, and as Brian says, we'll get closer, you know, in May when we do some permanent bonding, we'll at that point have, probably have bids in, and we'll know what our contract looks like for the actual construction costs, and so we can then begin to look at doing some more temporary borrowing and then permanent borrowing, depending if the interest rates hold.
So as the board knows, approximately $5 million, a little less, will be going out tomorrow to St. Mark's, so that, that'll be, you know, right away, two-thirds of it is gone, so we'll be, we'll be using those funds immediately.
All right, questions for Mr. Ballantyne from the board? Anyone? Ms. Fan, if anything, Mr. Schifrin? No? Ms. Sparky? Mr. Shea, I'm assuming not, since you just left. I don't have any other. So I would move that we vote to approve the request for the short-term note issuance for the public safety facility as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. Okay. Town council, all right, Mrs. Supriano is here, we're going to review, and there's a request for approval of the closing documents for St. Mark's land exchange. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the town is prepared to close, and the anticipation is that we'll be closing tomorrow with the Worcester Registry of Deeds. The primary closing documents that I'm going to be asking you to sign, I'm going to go over with you briefly, and then I'll just give you the package, and there are other residual documents, like title insurance affidavits. Normally, the council for the party would sign those, and I'm asking for authorization to sign a 1099, a title insurance affidavit, and others. But no one but you can sign the actual principal documents that are going to be recorded, as you are the chief executive of the town. So the first document is a record of vote, and this specific record of vote is to approve a second amendment to the land exchange agreement in the form that I will explain to you shortly. And the, in accordance with that, it's basically a restatement that these conveyances are going to happen as a result of the special act approved by the general court, Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2017. And it's also going to authorize the sale as part of that, of the public safety building, and it's going to authorize the acceptance of the deed from St. Mark's for the golf course parcel located at 36 Corderville Road. The final item is to authorize me again to simply take whatever action is necessary, including executing closing documents and settlement statements, but for these principal documents, so that this transaction can happen tomorrow. So that would be the first document. The second document is the second amendment to the land exchange agreement, and the principal aspects of this agreement are that there was a determination that the septic system for the maintenance shed or maintenance building failed. So we requested a credit against that particular cost. We talked to the director of public, excuse me, director of public health, and the estimated cost was $50,000, and St. Mark's has agreed to credit back to the town that amount for the subsequent fixing of that particular system. In speaking with the director of the Board of Health, the decision was made by the Board of Health, and by him, that no other testing would be needed on any other systems. That means the system that is on the property for the school, for Woodward School, the, no testing was going to be required on the public safety buildings because they were going to be demolished, and no testing was going to be on the clubhouse because that was going to be relocated and it would probably need some form of a new system. One issue that came up, and I worked this out with, with the town administrator, was St. Mark's request that they continue to be able to use the golf course for their golf team. And the provision that was settled was that the golf team shall be entitled to use the golf course property after closing for the duration of its spring 2018 semester at reasonable times that may be requested by St. Mark's and at the same rates by the town, or charged by the town, to other high school golf teams for comparable use of the property. The theory was equity. We didn't want there to be suggested that they were being treated anything better than any other team that would be able to use that facility, in that it would now be municipal The last item is the issue of the crediting or the consideration of the rollback taxes. The rollback taxes came out at $312,039, and the arrangement that was initially put into the agreement and clarified now that we know, except for the fact that they don't know the demolition costs, and there was supposed to be a trade-off on that, that those funds, all of the rollback taxes, would be held in escrow by St. Mark's councils, and in the event that there was, the demolition cost did not meet or exceed the rollback taxes, and then the town would get a credit back. If the rollback taxes were, were equal, rather, if the demolition costs were equal or higher, then the rollback taxes would be paid out as part of the settlement of our agreement. That is the sum total of the amendment that is the second document you're going to be asked to consider signing. The third document is the actual quitclaim deed on behalf of the town to St. Mark's, and the decision on consideration was that the principal aspect of this was the value of the golf course, so the deed from St. Mark's to the town is going to reflect the gross amount, which is $4,949,000. It's actually less than that when you take into consideration the closing costs and the credit I just mentioned to you for the $50,000. To make sense of this transaction, the consideration for the deed from the town to St. Mark's is $1 and other good and valuable consideration pursuant to the authority set forth in Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2017. And the theory there is the rest of the, the consideration of what we're doing here is based upon that very innovative land exchange agreement and the flow of benefits either way. Somehow, we had to quantify that for conveyancing purposes, and that was the decision of how we would quantify it. The last document that you'll be asked to consider is a statutory requirement, and relative to the deed of conveyance that will come from St. Mark's to the town, it is a vote to accept that deed, which would have to be duly recorded, as is required by state statute. Does anybody have any questions? These are the component documents, the rest are simple closing documents we will, will deal with at, at the closing itself. But does anybody have any specific question about what I brought forward?
Questions for council? No? Ms. Fan?
A quick question. The use of the golf course by the students of St. Mark's, is that a guarantee for one year, or is that a guarantee as long as all?
No. We only referenced the spring 2018.
Yeah, spring season 2018.
I mean, I understand why they'd want to do that, but as long as it's not something we have to deal with on a year-to-year basis?
It is not, and, and the concern of the town administrator when we were talking about it was, you know, equal and fair treatment.
Okay.
And he's right, and we negotiated that in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, other questions for council? Okay. None? All right, Ms. Schifrin, please.
Do you happen to have a settlement statement for us to review?
The settlement sta, there is a settlement statement, but the settlement statement is not completed. We, a draft is with the, the director of finance.
Okay.
We'd be glad to show it, I'll, I'll be glad to email everybody the final revised that we get tomorrow, but St. Mark's is controlling that settlement statement, and the one I have tonight is, is not completely accurate. It'll probably add some not significant costs, but that won't come, and I'll be glad to send it to everybody, if you wish.
Okay.
I'll do that.
And then, the items that you described in the amendment?
Yes.
Are those all different or changes since, like, the deal was presented at town meeting?
The agreement was at, the original land exchange agreement was actually executed with the contingent of town meeting approval before town meeting. So yes, this, this was, this was, there was a first amendment, quite frankly, I don't remember the specifics of that, but there was, this, this amendment was post-town meeting consideration. These are taking, basically, they're dealing with issues that nobody would have known about until we went out and we did the instrument survey, and we started to do the Title V analysis, and, you know, the, the ultimate decision of, well, they still don't have their, their demolition costs, so that's why we had to figure out, well, how are we going to do this, because you're not going to just get the money. So it's an escrow against it, and then we delineated the basis of how it would be decided once that happened.
Was it always the case that the rollback taxes were going to be escrowed for demolition costs?
Yes. Yes. Escrowed or, or given in consideration if they knew?
Okay.
At the time, and they, and they don't know at this time, but that was, that was a material provision at the beginning.
And then after tomorrow, the deal's done, so it doesn't matter if the costs are more?
If the, if the costs?
Per demolition?
If the costs equal or are higher than the rollback tax, then they get the $312,000 and the differential they have to pay.
Okay.
And just another quick point, you'll appreciate this, also, you'll all appreciate this, but it, in the original land exchange agreement, there was what was called a holdback provision, but the holdback provision, and I didn't negotiate that originally, that was negotiated by several of the prior selectmen, but it was, it was actually very creative and innovative. And it says that when we take possession of the land as of tomorrow, we've got 36 months at no rental cost to the town.
Right.
And then thereafter, if there is the need to stay on the facility, then it would trigger a rental cost, but we will be the possessors of a leasehold interest in that land for 36 additional months, minimum.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, okay. Council, can we, do we have to vote to approve these individually, or I'll ask for a motion? Can we do them collectively in one motion?
Either way is fine with me, as long as you identify the, the documents. There's four.
All right, is there a motion?
So I will move that we?
You want to see the documents?
I could, just so I get the wording correct, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am?
Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience before we, advisory's here this evening?
Doesn't appear so.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea?
So I move the record of vote of the Town of Southborough Board of Selectmen, December 19th, 2017, as presented in the document by town council.
All right, is there, do you want to do them all at once, or do you want to, might as well do them?
Okay. Just make sure I get them all correct.
Definitely.
I then move the quitclaim deed.
Is that? Yes, that's fine.
As presented. I move the second amendment to the land exchange agreement as presented, and then finally, the vote to accept the deed of land for the St. Mark's golf course property as presented to us tonight by town council.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass it unanimously. Thank you.
Now, upon your execution of those documents, I don't know how you're going to do that ministerially, but I will take your notarization on that, once you've signed. Do you, are you going to be doing that now, or are you going to?
Do it now, I guess.
We can do it now.
Should we do a, take a short recess, or is it not needed?
You may want to take a, just a, just a five-minute recess to do it.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess while we execute the documents.
Okay.[1119.92]
Okay, so we're back on. All documents have been executed. Anything further for us?
Yes, I'm just gonna ask the members of the Board of Selectmen, as you are the Board of Selectmen, for the town of Southborough, in signing those documents that are part of your vote, was that your free act indeed, as you are selectman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, excellent. Affirmative responses for everyone?
That's fine. And then the other document, I'm just gonna let you know, that has to be attested, is the Record of Vote, signed by the chairman, and now is gonna be attested by the town clerk, Mr. Hegarty, who has the seal of the town with him, I believe.
Excellent. Mr. Hegarty, is that a seal from the 1700s?
No.
Original town seal?
This is a 2017 version from Brooklyn, New York.
Ah. Alright.
I was hoping to see the big machine. A little waxed.
Yeah, wax.
We'll get all that to you later. Thank you. Well, never.
So, council, we're in good shape?
We're all set. I will send you the settlement statement tomorrow, and I'll keep you apprised.
I'd like to take a moment to thank you, in particular, council, for the incredible work that you have done representing this town, especially during this event. This has taken a significant amount of work on your part, as well as members of the Board of Selectmen, including Mr. Shea, Mr. Rooney, who have worked tirelessly to see this day come to fruition. And your advice and counsel throughout has been exemplary. So, thank you.
And I must say briefly, that I've been doing this law and government for over 45 years, even before I was a lawyer. And this is a great honor. This is cutting-edge transactions for a municipality, in terms of having this land exchange, getting public safety, protecting public land, which now become public land, and in such a way that it was blessed by the General Court and the governor of the Commonwealth. So, this entire government and the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, everybody, and the people of the town should be very pleased that they accomplished this.
I agree.
And I was very proud, and very proud to represent you in that.
Definitely a historic event, and we appreciate the partnership with St. Mark's throughout this whole process as well.
The lawyers have been very cooperative with us throughout.
Excellent. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Alright. Okay. Number two, we have an approval request from Conservation Commission to increase FY '18 Community Garden revolving fund spending. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, you have a request before you from Ms. Rosenbloom, the conservation agent, regarding the community gardens revolving fund. They're seeking to increase the spending authorization from $1,000 to $2,500. The reason being is that they had a water bill that was a little bit higher than they normally would have, and therefore, they need the additional spending authorization in order to accommodate that bill.
Okay. Ms. Rosenbloom is here. If there are any questions. I don't have any other members of the board?
No questions.
And I would move that we approve the request from Conservation Commission as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Shea. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Number three, we have an approval request from the DPW to increase FY '18 9/11 field revolving fund spending. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request, again, from the 9/11 field revolving fund. Normally, town meeting has the authorization at $50,000. However, with the turf replacement anticipated, there's something on the agenda here tonight for you to consider awarding that. There's been work that has been completed, in terms of the engineering and the bidding and the procurement by a vendor, because, again, this is something that's a little bit bigger, and not something that's easily done in-house. And that spending authorization needs to be increased to, if I understand, was Ms. Gallagher, increased by $140,000, so from $50,000 to $190,000, in order to accommodate the engineering design and bidding fees, as well as the portion of rec revolving funds that is gonna be used towards the replacement of the turf expenses.
Alright.
No.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. Yes.
Alright. Ms. Gallagher is here. If there are questions for her? Any questions on this matter? Yes, Ms. Brock?
I actually have a question for Mr. Purple. Excuse me. I have a question for Mr. Purple.
Yes.
Does advisory not also have to approve these? I know we do. I know advisory's here. Are they gonna be taking a note, just for process? Are they gonna be taking a vote on the revolving funds tonight as well? So, I believe we both have to approve them in order for it to...
They do, and I believe advisory is posted this evening, so I would defer, I think, to Mr. Kalinda and Chairman Peters, as to whether they wanna take these up individually after the board approves them, or whether they want to address them collectively once you're done.
Okay. Because I just wanna make sure I know Beth is here, and she may think it's all said, and advisory may or may not, and I would hate for there to be any issues while everyone is here to resolve it. That's all. Thank you.
So, if... Yeah, I was gonna do our votes first, and then I'll turn it over to advisory. Yes?
I have a follow-up question. In using the revolving funds, which our expectations are to pay down that borrowing, the money's there to cover that expense, and if, for some reason, the field has to sit idle for another season, do we have the revolving fund, do we have this liability covered by the revolving fund, to make those payments on the bond?
So, the 140 additional does leave a little bit in the revolving fund, plus, that's actually puts in some contingency money into what we have available for construction. So, there should be enough for the interest payment that we'll have this fall, and then next year, probably, after we would've gotten through a whole fall and spring season, would be when the actual first full bond, is this right, Brian?
Full principal payment.
Yeah, comes through, and we should have two seasons worth. And Recreation Commission is planning on changing their rates to actually accommodate that.
Alright, that's the number-one priority, that this bond is covered through those fees.
Alright, any further questions? Okay. I would move that we approve the request from DPW to increase the FY '18 9/11 field revolving fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have requests from Recreation Commission to increase FY '18 Recreation revolving fund spending. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, this is an increase requested by Ms. Ferguson, the recreation director, looking to increase the spending cap for the revolving fund from $342,094 to $600,000. The reason for the request is due to the continuation of the finishing, it's almost finished at this point, the Choate Field Light Project and the Fay Memorial Playground Project. This is something, there was a request that was done in the spring, but obviously, those requests end with the fiscal year, so something needed, so obviously, this needed to be done again, so that is why the request is before you this evening.
Alright. Questions for Rec Commission? Ms. Vanniff?
The same concerns. Any and all liabilities have to be paid first out of the revolving funds before another project is started or initiated, moving ahead. Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Ferguson is nodding in the affirmative.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Then I would move that we approve the request from the Rec Commission to increase their revolving fund as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Then I would turn it over to advisory at this point. Mr. Peters? Please, wherever you'd like, sir.
Can I take this one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, on the first, the first one, which is the revolving fund, that was the first one, I would ask anyone on advisory if they had any specific questions. As far as Choate Field's concerned, based on what I know, and I'm speaking as a member now, that really has to be done. And if the engineer, really, the design and engineering needs to be done properly, that we don't redo it again. I mean, that's the only thing. I have to say that we don't revisit it again, because of what we are sitting with there. If there, so I'm personally, but anybody else who wants to, from advisory, it's open. It's an open meeting for us now.
Yep.
Sam Stivers, advisory member. I guess, I'm interested in understanding a little bit more about revolving funds generally. I mean, I don't, for example, have a lot of worry about the conservation issue particularly, but Rec Commission, I've got a lot of questions about how that revolving fund operates, and this particular transaction is not so much of a concern, but I guess I'd like to have a discussion among the advisory committee members about how we get a better view in terms of where some of that money goes. For example, I understand that some of that money historically has been used to buy a van, engineering studies, and those kind of things, that I think ought to go through the normal budget process, as opposed to through a revolving fund. So, you know, again, I'm not ready to blanket sign off on this personally. Maybe others disagree, but I'd like to have a conversation among the advisory committee about this. Thank you.
Advisory hasn't had a chance to discuss this. We are concerned about the way revolving funds are used. We don't think there's as much control over them as there should be. So, I would prefer to not vote tonight, and talk about this at our next meeting, as far as, the conservation one's fine, but the other two, to talk about those, because we really haven't a chance to talk about this. We've heard it, as far as I'm concerned, for the first time tonight, as far as what wants to be done. But I really think that the use of the revolving funds needs to be part of the overall discussion, as far as the budget goes, which we're gonna get into in a few minutes. We've got to make sure that we are using the revolving funds in a way that makes sense with this budget. So, we've got, I think, some changes we're gonna propose, as far as the budget process goes. So, I would prefer that advisory not vote tonight on this. Is that going to cause a problem?
No, there'll be some bills that are waiting to be paid until the limits are increased. So, I would, I'm sorry.
The issue is, if I may address the advisory committee, you can see what my job is, to address all the issues regarding how revolving funds work, how it's used, when it's used, how it's going to be used in the future, and talking about how it was used in the past, is a totally different, I don't see that, at this point in time, stopping a vote on something that's clearly false, should fall, I think, within the rights of what is the case here. There's a need specifically to repair the field, that is being funded from the revolving fund, which is, I may be correct, that is within the scope of that revolving fund, and what can be done with it. So, I would plead with my colleagues on advisory that I have no issue addressing revolving funds, in general, at a later stage, but to, I think if we have to wait to agree to this, until we've resolved all the issues about how revolving funds are used in the town, for what, when, this is not gonna get done. We're looking at budgets coming up, so I would plead with the members of advisory that we pass this, because, and not to link it to a total scope of what revolving funds are being used for in the town. That is my plea. And therefore, I would really ask for a vote to approve this. Do I have your support? So, anybody want to move that we vote?
I vote that we vote.
Okay. Anybody second? Anybody second? Let's vote. We are, we're voting that we approve the revolving fund request for Choate Field. Say again?
Brad's motion was to vote, to move that we vote, actually, not that we vote to approve it.
Okay. That we vote for, well, I asked that we vote, that we approve.
So, how about I hear the motion, and ask that we vote to approve the reserve fund transfers that have been articulated, and go down on the...
Not reserve, not reserve fund transfers. Yeah. Increase to the revolving fund limits. Yes.
Got it. Anybody second that? Anybody second it? Thank you, Judy. Okay. Can we take a vote? One, two? All in favor? That's what I'm asking, basically. One, two, three. Anybody? Are you voting? We got three for it. Against, opposed to it? Three. We do not have approval. So...
Can I suggest we consider a special meeting to...
Yes, you're welcome.
Adrian, I was not suggesting that we somehow resolve the, you know, intergalactic revolving fund issues necessarily, before we take a position on this. I just think it would be useful to hear what advisory committee members think about these three issues, and I think we could, I would propose that we have a special meeting to consider this, and move to a quick resolution of this issue. I don't wanna hold up contracts or whatever, but I'm certainly prepared to meet quickly, and I hope others might be, to move this along quickly, and then maybe as part of that conversation, figure out what we wanna do more generally about looking at revolving funds, which was my issue. So, again, I wasn't suggesting that we stop the train until we resolve this six months or a year later, or whatever. I think we can do this quickly. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
I do think you did suggest it, Mr. Stivers, because you brought up points that had nothing to do with the specific issue tonight. So, I want to point out that, in order to keep the train moving, I would agree that we have a meeting on this next time, but it will be about the specific issue, and we can, and not about the total issue. So, we don't have, we don't have agreement tonight, so I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that you carry on with your agenda.
Ms. Vanniff has a question, sir.
If I may, to the advisory chair, later on our agenda, it's to award the bid for 9/11 field, which is part of this consideration with the revolving fund. So, your delay delays the, and I'm not saying that negatively, it delays the awarding of this bid this evening for 9/11 field.
I do appreciate that. I understand it.
I know you do. I'm just asking if they've any thought of reconsideration.
Along those same lines, I was just gonna ask, maybe if you could ask to vote on the three individually. Nobody seemed to have a problem with the water bill.
Yeah.
And 9/11 revolving fund, funds can only be used on that field. So, maybe with some discussion in your group, people would be okay with that, and then the contract could be awarded, so it can be replaced, and then you can discuss recreation at another time.
It's a good point, Mr. Schiffern.
Mr. Hegarty may have a question, sir? Did I see? You have a comment, sir?
Hegarty, please.
I speak as a citizen, not as a town clerk. I have a substantial dog in this fight, as a former member of advisory, and as a person that brought the citizens petition together to get the funding for 9/11, to make that thing go. I understand the concerns. When I was a former member of advisory, I understand the concerns about revolving funds. I was on rec for many, several years as well. 9/11 is a whole different animal. It's a whole separate part of money, for one particular purpose, and I'd ask you to sever that from the other discussions. It's a very tight, self-contained fund for one purpose and one purpose and only, and there is a critical timing to get this approved. If the Board of Selectmen approved this tonight, there is a window of opportunity to do some work on that field now, right now, that would make a substantial difference for the users in the spring. If this isn't, if the vote stands tonight, not to be able to go forward on this thing, you're pretty much gonna, well, not you, but I'm saying collectively, that's gonna be an incredible, incredible inconvenience for all the hundreds of kids and their families that use those fields in the spring, that field in the spring. There's basically no room in the end. There's no place else to go. So, if we can't get the shovel and the dirt and work on stuff immediately on this, you've kissed the spring goodbye there, and that is a disaster of enormous proportions for all those families. And I truly think that that 9/11 fund is a very separate issue than the Recreation General Revolving Fund. You just don't have the degree of issues. It's pretty simple. The money goes in, the money's spent on 9/11, there's no, there's nothing else. So, I'd ask you to consider that as a separate issue, please.
Mr. Shea?
Just to...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a decision? I would like to have a meeting outside with the committee.
Sure.
For us to discuss it, and we can come back to it.
Just to tag on and add on to Mr. Hegarty's comment as well, about getting this done quick. I mean, there was overwhelming support for 9/11 field at the town meeting a couple of years ago when that was passed. People have worked diligently to get the land easement agreement extended for that 15-year duration, so that this could match the bonding as well. There's been tremendous effort to get this done. I think there's a lot of people in town wish the field has been replaced already, given its condition, and I would just urge advisory to reconsider, but the point that Mr. Hegarty has made.
Mr. Chairman, I do appeal that I would like to have a meeting, I'll have a meeting outside. I call for a decision. I'll have a meeting outside. I call for a decision on our side on this.
Sure, and we'll continue with our agenda.
Thank you.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Okay. So I think next we have Mr. Malinowski, who I believe is here. Mr. Malinowski, an update on public safety and building projects. Sir, welcome.
Thank you. So this may be the last you see me for a little bit, but I come bearing what I would consider good news. So when I last reported to all of you, I reminded you we had a budget at town meeting that was approved of $22.6 million, of which of that $2 million was set aside for contingency that we really fought pretty hard for as a Public Safety Study Committee. When we did our initial cost estimate, we were estimating that we were going to use $1.4 out of that $2 million contingency, just based on changes in bid conditions. Not changes in scope, but changes in bid conditions. We've had two public meetings since that time, and our delta is down to $125,000. I think it's important to understand the process that we went through. So our design consultants met with the chiefs and came up with a list of items that the chiefs were in favor of and not in favor of. There were numerous considerations in excess of the $1.4 million that were presented to our committee, with the general theme being our committee voted against anything that impacted the operations of the departments. So we voted basically to preserve what we promised the departments at town meeting. We did make one tough decision, and the only item we voted against the safety chiefs on was a carport that had been in the original plans for the police department. The police chief was pretty adamant that that impacts his operations, but we decided to move that to what we would call an add alt. An add alt means is when the bid packages come in, and this is our only one that we're anticipating at this point, depending upon the bid conditions, on bid day, the town could decide whether to include that item or not. So for example, if the bid came in far less than what we are expecting on paper today, the town would have a decision on that day to make of whether to include that or not. Obviously, if the item came in well above what we're expecting, I think the decision has kind of already been made. So I think from a cost perspective, we are trending very well. There is only one open item. We actually just had a public meeting. We had six members. And as you know, our committee's made up of nine. And one of the items that we're still vetting is the exterior material to be used in the building. The material that was presented in all cost estimates to date was brick. And our design consultants, as well as the town's owner's project manager, have asked us to strongly consider using hardy plank, which is like a siding, on portions of the facility mainly. I'll call it the... They use the words, the areas that get less beat up. So i.e. not the fire apparatus bays. So they... It would be some sort of mix between the hardy plank and the brick facade. The... There was a couple of options presented to us. The magnitude of the savings is in the $100, $250,000 range. We had differing views in the committee. We actually did not take a vote because I thought it was important to get the opinion of the three members that weren't there. We were either going to have a tie vote, or we were going to have one, basically only a very small majority. And given the magnitude of that decision, we opted to hold another public meeting next week quickly to make a decision once we get some more facts around that. So that's really the only open item, so you're really going to sway back down to zero, or you're going to... You're going to be about $125,000 in the hole. Now remember, the cost estimates that we're using have a contingency in them as well because they haven't finished the construction documents. So it's very likely that the bid could come in well under what we're actually estimating now. It could come in over two. I mean, we just don't know what bid conditions will be until we actually get the bid packages back. That's kind of just the nature of the beast. So that's where we stand from a cost perspective. I think the Planning and Conservation Commission... The Planning Board and Conservation Commission have us on their next agenda, which are in the first part of January. We are pretty upbeat and hopeful that those are the last hearings for both of those. And then our design consultants will basically be doing some pre-qualifications of the subcontractors and eventually going up to bid in the spring. With that being said, there are a few... That's the cost item. I think there are two items that I think you just need to be aware of. They may sound minor, but in the big thing, they could hold up a planning board approval. So if you have a voice on these two items that I'm going to bring up right now, I would strongly encourage you to give us any feedback that I can take back to our committee. The first is the golf course committee. We have to actually come up with a plan of what our sign's going to look like for the facility out on Route 85. We took a vote to... It's going to say Southborough Police or Fire or Southborough Fire Police. The chiefs think we can swap. You can... You can understand the conversation we had there. We're not looking for you to choose between the two. The important part is what comes underneath that. The golf course committee has asked that we have some labeling for the golf course, which intuitively would make sense because that is going to be their entrance. My personal opinion, and I think this is really where you need to weigh in, is we don't really know whether it's actually going to be called the St. Mark's Golf Course or whether you and the town are going to decide to name it something else now or in the future. So we were going to put a placeholder that you would have the option to add that at the bottom of the sign, but in caveat that to the planning board so that they could see kind of how it would look with golf course signage and without, just so that they knew what they were approving. There are some variances that we could go for after planning board approval if we decided we need a bigger sign. And that would be through the town's building inspector. So that's how we're planning to proceed on that piece. But I think I'd like to at least throw it out to you to start to consider how you want to address the golf course signage. Our committee was pretty strong in our view that this sign needs to be very prominent for police and fire because if there's one building in town you really want to be able to find if you need to find it, it would be this facility. So we didn't want to take away from them being able to find police and fire by having it kind of be muted with golf. So I think that's just a decision you're going to have to make. And the other item that was brought up by one member of the planning board that we don't really have a strong view on, but it really comes to how you're labeling other buildings that you control in town, is whether you wanted a town seal on the sign. Believe it or not, we need to provide definitive guidance on that sooner rather than later. The view of our committee was more, you put a seal on the sign, it takes away from the visibility of police and fire. But if you are looking for consistent signage around town, our consultant actually did go and actually look at all the signs of the various public buildings and noticed various different designs. But unfortunately, we need to make a call on that sooner or later. It might seem like a small item, but it is within planning board's official purview to approve as part of the plan. And finally, before, you know, Mr. Chairman, you open up to any questions. We have been working very collaboratively with the school committee and the superintendent. One of the main... You remember, last time I was here, I told you we had a potential issue with two roadways versus one with planning. I think the general consensus while planning hasn't voted on it yet is they're going to defer to the Public Safety Chiefs for their professional opinion on that. What now has percolated is, well, how is the school traffic coming in? And we need to know that so we can decide on traffic light, et cetera. So we have had some good dialogue between our consultants and the school committee and the superintendent, and I think there is a definitive plan of what will be done, you know, for the foreseeable future and what conditions, you know, they would be willing to live with to enhance their access day one without compromising our timeline, cost, et cetera. So that's my update. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Malinowski. Ms. Fanaf?
I'll weigh in on both. The signage, I think it should say Public Safety, Fire, Police only. I don't know why... It's a lit sign, right?
It is, yes, as currently presented.
I don't know why the golf course would require a lit sign. They close at dusk. So to me, it would be unnecessary. And the second question was about the facade. I personally would like it to look very similar to the outside of the school. So that... I mean, they are neighbors. The buildings will be neighbors. I think they should complement each other. And there was one other question you asked, Jason.
Town seal on the sign.
I don't see the need, but that's my own opinion. There was one question that did come up at the planning board meeting about outside storage. And that came into question, who would police it? Personally, I don't think there should be any outside storage. Any container vehicles, any vehicles left outside. I mean, that's the whole purpose of this building, to enclose everything. And if we allow it to creep outside the building, what is the perimeter of that building off the parking area? So if you need an opinion on that for the planning board, I don't think it should go... It shouldn't even happen. There's no reason for it. That's why we're building a station to accommodate this type of expansion, so...
Yeah, and I guess my response to that, and I think I said something similar at the planning board meeting, was obviously, we can get the view... We can get the current chiefs that you employ to put something in writing to the planning board, but ultimately, there will be new chiefs that occupy that building during its lifetime. So, you know, whether it be this board or future boards, I mean, they are your employees, so you could certainly... I think you have control over that portion if it's not meeting your standards. I mean, I think there is no expectation of the current chiefs to store anything outside, but again, 30 years down the road.
Right. That's why I... I would like what I said memorialized in a document saying, "That is not where we want to go in 30 years. That's not where we want to go in five years." I mean, I don't like it, and I've been involved in the fire service for years. You get one vehicle, then you get two vehicles, and you get a container vehicle. And, you know, in all due respects, in developing this, we did make some promises to this... On the site itself. And I really encourage this board taking a strong position that we're building a station to accommodate the needs down the road. There should be nothing outside.
So maybe, Mr. Chairman, if that is the general consensus, the board, what I would recommend is that Mr. Purple, coordinate with the two chiefs, to get a letter in writing that meets this board's satisfaction because I think that, quite honestly, is the only resident concern that's been raised at any public hearing to date.
Well, if I can just carry on with that statement. I raised that question with the CR committee as far as the golf course and the agreement there. As far as, could you have a temporary tent? How big would it be? How long could it stay up? If you brought in additional equipment, could it stay on the site and be covered up with a tarp and left there? I mean, I personally have asked those questions because I know what happens, and I want to prevent it.
Ms. Brock, you have?
If I may, in speaking of storage outside, is that in reference to like the SEMA trailers? And I think there's three or four trailers. The police department has a trailer, the fire department...
It was not trailers. It's the other ancillary stuff. Because there is trailer storage planned outside that's always been a plan. I think there were some maybe extreme examples used. I think Mrs. Fanaf is absolutely correct. These things creep over time. The intended use is maybe not how someone in 10 years may be trying to use it.
No, I agree, but I just wanted to be clear that there are currently SEMA trailers. I think there's three or four, and the fire department, the police department, excuse me, has a trailer as well. So we're not specifically speaking about those trailers, are we?
Those trailers typically are used in an emergency situation. And we have Station Two, and we have other sites in this town where we can keep items that are used on occasions that are extreme. That's all I'm saying. I don't want to see container trucks behind this brand-new station.
Agreed, agreed. So, okay.
So we do have both chiefs here. I mean, either one, I mean, welcome, Chief Paul. So they're here. They can speak to this issue unless you have the intel from them, but they're here.
Just for their benefits, given that they just walked in. You may want to tell them what they're signing up for.
So we have an issue about whether or not there'd be containers on the new public safety facility. And so there's concern about having containers on the facility. Are there... Are there public safety reasons why you would need to have containers for storage or otherwise on the facility or not? They're... Both chiefs are applying for the microphone. Looks like Chief Morrow's in the lead. Chief, welcome.
So we're talking about the sign because fire is going to go before police. Now that that's settled, from my standpoint, I'm hoping to not have to put containers out there. With the new building, we should have enough space to put all the equipment that we have right now. Other than the trailers that we already have outside are going to stay outside, but some will be inside. But some of the equipment that we have to store in the trailers now will probably go inside the building. So I'm not anticipating anything additional at this point.
All right, thank you. Chief Paulis?
I just currently have one Connex box. You probably wouldn't even notice it. It's on the side of our garages. It's dark colored. We keep some lodger items for our firearms training, whatnot. And basically, right now, we have two garage stalls, and we got the box so we could move all the bigger stuff that's clogging it up into the Connex box. I still have two garages in the new building. I don't anticipate having any more than that one Connex box. So we're just talking to the architects, you know, a good spot in the parking lot where we could just move it out of the way. But I just have the one, and I don't anticipate, you know, any more than that.
Any issues with the Connex box, Ms. Fanaf, or other members?
I don't even know what that is.
All right, so in the Army, so we use these as well. But it's a huge... It can be small, but they're a good-sized, you know, storage box that where you actually do have to house.
Metal box.
You do want a metal box. You do want to house some things.
Yes.
They have it now. So I don't think the intent would... And it is an outdoor box.
I understand that we have outdoor storage, but the whole purpose of building a larger facility is to accommodate what we have, not to grow what we have and have it outside. And the fire service, as good as it is, and I know others that have done the same thing, they acquire equipment that we may not use, but it's a good thing to have. And then we just find ourselves storing it. I don't want to see that happen on this site. And whatever we can do to prevent it, it should be very clear that's not what our expect... That's not what my expectations would be after spending this kind of money seeing things stored outside.
But a Connex box, one that you're referring to, do you foresee that being stored inside?
No, outside.
That's where they are. So I have no issue with that continuing. We'll hear from others. But I don't... I'm not looking like Ms. Fanaf. I'm not looking for an expansion of what is currently there.
Are we talking like an Eagle leasing container?
Yes.
All right.
And this isn't... It's not the huge one. It's kind of a small one. But like I said, that's what we're doing now, where we agreed to keep the same amount of garage space. You know, if I could get a couple of extra stalls, we could eliminate the Connex box. But it's just one box. If you went up there right now, you wouldn't even notice it. If we can put it in...
I noticed it. That's why I bring them up, brought the question up.
If we can put it in some obscure space and put some abrevities around it, then that would be great.
Thank you, Chief.
If it comes down where we got to make do, you know, we'll make do. But this suits our needs for right now, and I don't picture anything being expanded beyond that.
And while you're both here, in terms of signage, police and fire, fire and police, but also, you know, what do we normally see in other communities in which you serve that have a, you know, dual public safety facility? And also, I mean, have you seen ones that have a golf course or something else associated with it? I mean, I'm not a big fan of having that as part of the sign, but I think they should have their own sign. But if you have an opinion on these, we'd love to hear it.
I'll leave that up to you.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Schiffern?
So I guess for Jason, along the topic of the sign, were there any design options in that entryway that has golf with a separate sign? Maybe on the north side or...
Not currently. We'll have to check with our design team, but there are line-of-sight concerns for turning. And that was a big topic that we've actually gotten over, that speed bump. So I think right now, there was no anticipation of having two separate signs just due to safety concerns.
Okay. I mean, I think if there was any option there or even a little further north in like the wooded area or unused portion of the Chode Field, just to indicate that it's there to keep it separate, I think that would be good to see if that could be an option.
Okay.
The carport that was put as an add alt, how much is that... The carport that was put as an add-all, how much is that line item?
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
So in order for an add-all thing to go back in, do you need to be under budget or under budget plus your contingency?
That will ultimately be a decision for you on bid day, probably in consultation with our committee, but ultimately, you would be the one that signs the bid as the board's document. So I think you would have to look at where we stand from an overall project perspective. Now, remember, there are things that aren't part of that bid, like radios and other things like furniture and fixtures that we're continuing to vet. But that would ultimately be up to you based on, you know, what you're seeing in the bid conditions, right? If it comes in three million dollars under where we're thinking we're at, like, maybe that's an easier decision. But if we're right on, I mean, we need to absolutely have as much contingency as possible for the unknown with construction, because that's really what contingency is for, based on all the advice we've gotten.
Yeah, I went to the meeting where you did that, you know, went through those line items. And that was the one that kind of bugged me that came out. It just seems like, given the nature of the weather up here, heat in the summer, snow in the winter, year-round use, keeping vehicles outside, that that should be in there, that should be part of the building.
That is, you know, we took a vote as a committee that is absolutely within your purview as the board to change that. We were trying to make a responsible decision, and we thought it wasn't the right thing at that time to basically be five hundred thousand into a two-million-dollar contingency, just given the broader economic conditions that we're faced with. We know we have twenty-two point six to spend. We are pretty adamant we don't want to spend twenty-two point six. So it pained me to vote against the chief, quite honestly, because I think we've all been lockstep. But I think you put our committee together to make some tough decisions and not just shake our heads and, you know, nod away at, you know, what the chiefs ask. So unfortunately, that was the first real tough decision we had to make.
Yeah, no, I think you guys have done an amazing job all along, including that last meeting. It was just, wanted to give my own opinion of that item.
Ms. Brock, you.
I also, sorry, I also think that I would like to see a second sign for golf, if there's a way to do it. I think the public safety building kind of stands alone, as does golf. Consistency and signage is important, but I personally don't necessarily feel that the town seal has to be there. Again, my opinion, my fellow board members can obviously disagree with that. One thing I would like to see is, I do know, I understand what the chief's saying about the Connex box. Is there any way we can ask the architect to come up with a way? Obviously, we're very cognizant of the neighborhood as well and what their views are going to be, potential views. And I would imagine there's got to be some way to screen this in some way, to make it viable to be able to do. I also agree in not expanding any of this, you know, outside things going forward. But maybe that's something that for your next meeting, you can just rely on the architect and their expertise and see if there is a way, space-wise, I understand the need and also understand the need of the neighborhood. So I think there's probably a compromise in there, some way that we can find a way to do this, whether it be screening with trees, as was said, or whatnot. So if we could look into that, that would be great. And I also would hope that depending on how the bids come back as well, that the add-all could possibly be put back in if we're looking towards the future and everything else, I think that's important. So, thank you.
Mr. Shea.
So shame on me for not knowing this, drive as many times as I've driven down that road. Is there a sign currently for the golf course?
Yes.
Yes.
At the entrance off eighty-five?
Yep.
So I think there needs to be some signage, but I think that we're better off having the public safety, fire, police, police-fire sign standalone.
So it started tonight, just so everyone's clear. It started as public safety. We actually changed it to police-fire, which started the whole conversation.
And with respect to the town seal, so obviously, it's on a number of the other signs that we have. They're wooden signs. Is this going to be a wooden sign? Is that going to, is the type of sign that we're proposing going to match that? If it is, I might lean towards consistency. If it's going to be completely different, I don't think.
The way it's currently designed is it's backlit, so the lighting, the lettering will light up. We actually had a pretty extensive conversation in our meeting, and John Lyons, who's a member of committee lieutenant in Weston Police, mentioned that they spent upwards, I think, thirty-five or forty-five thousand dollars on their sign. We're not planning, like, they went masonry, and we obviously are taking what we think is a reasonable approach. So it's a backlit sign. It will not look like any of the others in town.
From that perspective, I feel less inclined to include the seal, and I would go with, focus as much on the intent of the building with the lettering.
Okay.
So I agree with lots of that. So no real need, from my perspective, for a seal. If the sign said "public safety" and on one side, "police" and one side, "fire", they're both in equal footing. But you will figure that out. And then I think there should be a separate sign, if possible, for the golf course. And I have zero issue with the chief's Connex box.
Okay.
All right, other questions, comments before?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malinas. Okay. Advisory is back with us, yes. Mr. Peters, please.
Mr. Chairman, advisory, had a meeting. And following, I'm going to keep it short. As far as the DPW request to increase the nine-one-one field revolving fund, that's agreed to.
Okay.
Number two, the conservation request for the water bill, that's also agreed to. As far as recreation is concerned, that request, the vote was that we would address that in a, you know, as a priority meeting in the budget session that are coming up, which are going to be packed, we'll address that there.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Okay. Should we go right to that then, or should we do this one? All right, so let's go to number eight, the preliminary FY nineteen budget review. Mr. Ballantyne. Is this going to power up for a little bit? Is it going to, you have something to show?
It's only going to take a minute or two, but if you have something quick, I don't, it's up to you, or?
Then we can do the consent agenda items.
Sure.
All right, so I'm going to go, now that I think we can go forward with number five, I'm going to actually do one through five first. I may want to, I'm going to ask you about number six.
Sure.
All right, so, so I would move that. Okay, so approve the meeting minutes, February ten, twenty-seventeen. Why don't we vote that one now? I'll move that one, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. And two abstentions, untrusting? Okay. Two is accept five-hundred-dollar community spirit mini grant award toward nine-eleven field replacement. I would move that one, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, accept twenty-six, accept twenty-six thousand, three-hundred-dollar donation from participants in the gobble-wobble race. Is there a second?
Second.
And I would just thank Ms. Ferguson and all of the volunteers who make the gobble-wobble race an outstanding annual event for the town of Southborough, and which brought in over twenty-six thousand dollars from the participants as a donation. So outstanding. All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, open the warrant for April nine, twenty-eighteen, annual town meeting. I would move that, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And award the bid for replacement of turf at nine-eleven field. I move that, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, unanimous. We do have a consent agenda item, number six, to approve Department of Transportation letter for signalized crossing at forty-eight Main Street, which is the face school. Is there an update for the public that you can give on that one? What that one is going to entail, Ms. Galligan?
This was a request from Face School as part of the Main Street project that they just, it's a signal similar to over at, that we have at St. Mark's, where it doesn't necessarily stop, it just makes people alert that there's somebody trying to cross. And with all the traffic and the outside of schools, the regular school zone flashing light hours that there's crossing there, this is just something that, for the safety of that crossing, it makes sense.
Excellent, I would move that. Well, is there a second? We'll have discussion.
Second.
All right, discussion, Ms. Fannaf.
Karen, quickly, the Main Street working group, were they opposed to this in their discussions?
I believe it was a split vote, actually, and, but it's something that as part of, it, since that project's really a safety project, it makes sense and we really need to do it. They weren't necessarily opposed opposed, it was more of a, of a split discussion. But we do have one going on at Woodward, so.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All opposed.
One, okay. Mr. Ballantyne. The lights, how do you do that?
That's going to be the most merry part of this discussion, is Snoopy, with the lights actually flashing. So this is our annual, really what is our annual opening budget discussion. It is the first time we have some of the numbers in a, in a format that we can see a more total picture, rather than just little pieces that we're wondering about. So I'm going to run through this fairly quickly. So I'm going to break it up into revenues and expenses and some overall thoughts. The estimated revenues increase is point seven percent. That's pretty anemic, obviously. Local aid, minimal, if any. We know the state's struggling with some issues at their level. We're not much hopeful for any help there. Local receipts, we've level funded for FY nineteen. I think in the past four years, we've increased that slightly over two-hundred thousand dollars, or rate about two-hundred thousand dollars. In January is our biggest local revenue producer, which is excise tax. So we will see that in about another four to six weeks. We'll know that number. And if there's any adjustments we feel necessary at that time, we can do that. New growth, we decreased that, two-hundred-and-five thousand for FY nineteen. Last three years averaged about six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. I think I mention this every year. Part of that is not known to the spring, so we're fairly conservative on that number. Usually about four to, you know, three-fifty or four, four-fifty. We will be meeting, actually, on several of these items, we will be meeting in the next few weeks with the town administrator and other financial staff, such as the assessor. So we'll be revisiting some of these numbers. Free cash decreased, I've mentioned this before, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Lot less departmental turnbacks for last year and some snow and ice needs that we had to fund at the end of last year. So there was a few things that hurt us there. Other revenues are level funded for nineteen, including cemetery funds, ambulance, and water. Revolving fund revenues, we did have a discussion, obviously, earlier in the night, but just as a reminder, and we'll mention this in the budget book again, fees are usually used for specific purposes. Recreation, town celebrations are unusual, they're usually one-hundred-and-fiftieth, et cetera, et cetera. Conservation fees, there's actually a lot of other purposes that the town of Southborough doesn't use, but are allowed. So I just wanted to mention that also. Expenses, total town operating departments are up, are being requested at least up five-point-five-three percent, or that equates to about five-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. That's non-water. Benefits and debt obligations are big accounts, up eleven-point-five-three percent, or one-point-one million. The health insurance, we're estimating now a spread of five to ten percent. Usually the retiree plans, we estimate a little more, because we actually estimate a little lower. Those tend to be a little more predictable. The active plans, the active employees, they tend to be a little bit harder to pin down at this time of year. So we'll refine this. Again, this is eighty-nine percent of the budget. We do actually have a January meeting with the retirement board in a couple of weeks. The town administrator and myself will be attending, and we'll get some more data on that, on our retirement assessment. And we'll continue to monitor the loss ratios and et cetera for the health insurance budgets. Debt, seven-point-seven-sixty, that's the note you signed tonight. Will be turned over into a permanent bond in May, as we discussed. The school debt is decreasing again in FY nineteen, another half million. However, it's mostly offset by the anticipated debt that we've issued for the public safety building and those other miscellaneous projects. The town water budget is increasing two percent, or thirty-three thousand dollars. As you know, that's fully funded by water rates, as is their debt, as is their capital requests. Expenses continued, the educational departments. We don't have final numbers for this, so this is, I want to stress, it's estimates. We're hoping that the estimates, or the actuals are fairly close to these estimates. I would hope they would be, I think they will be. However, they're, it's a total of three-point-one-three percent in the whole education sector. K-8 was estimated at three. Assavet, I'm sorry, regional is three-point-five. And Assavet is seven-point-two-four due to additional students attending that institution. Any Norfolk assessment will be determined later in the fiscal year. We typically do fund for one student, only because the cost of that can be a surprise, upward of forty to fifty thousand dollars. So we usually are a little conservative and put that in there. So the detail for the town expenses, and I'll just run through this real quick. What some of the departments are hoping to do, or some services they're hoping to maybe change, et cetera. The police department is asking for one new officer. I think this issue you've addressed last year. It's a multi-year plan to add three officers. The cost of that is about eighty thousand. Planning department has some consulting services for open space inspections and tree planting assessments. It's about seven thousand. Advisory board, and this is a result of actually the finance group getting together and requesting them to consider an increase. They are proposing an increase of a hundred thousand for the reserve fund and additional funding for their minute-taking services in their, in their little budget that they have. Information technology, new permitting software to replace the current software that's not being supported. We feel that's pretty important. Cost is twenty-two thousand on that. Email licenses for the boards and committees, additional licenses, nine thousand. EDC support costs for a new employee who will be replacing Pam as the economic development coordinator, that's twenty-eight hundred. And DPW, small amounts for building maintenance for some lighting near their building. Council on Aging, some more administrative hours, twenty-four hundred, two and a half a week. Youth and family, program coordinator, increase hours from fourteen to nineteen hours for part of the year. That's thirty-five hundred dollars. The next one, library, you can strike, because we actually got an updated budget from them after this was done. So they revised their, their numbers a little bit. So it doesn't look like, it almost looks like a push on that one. So that, you can make a note just to strike, and we'll revisit that as they go along. They're proposing to do a little bit of a reorganization, so it's sort of an ongoing process. So right now, it's, it's, looks like it's not going to be a cost issue. The town clerk department, increasing hours, administrative hours for their part-time work for three hours a week, and that's about three thousand approximately. Going off into capital now, the budget, obviously, the capital budget increased this year quite a bit. The eighteen capital budget, as you remember. The eighteen capital budget, as you remember, this is an operating budget, it's like a departmental budget, but it's capital, typically recurring items. So there were three items for sixty-six thousand last year, and twenty-five thousand of that came from the, the general fund. This proposal was, goes up to four hundred and seventeen thousand for seven items, it increases that to a hundred and forty-seven thousand. The regular capital articles, the larger items, we put on, on the separate articles. For eighteen was six hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty of that was general fund for a dozen items, and for nineteen, it just about doubles it, or a little more it doubles it money-wise, a million six is the total, twenty-one items. And almost all that, unfortunately, is gonna come from the general fund, a million six of the million six seventy-four, a million six oh nine. So here's the detail on the capital and budget articles. You can see the various facility and DPW requests, along with some, some miscellaneous requests. There's not a whole lot we can push off in this capital budget. I know the advisory still has to go through and do their, a more detailed analysis of it. The town administrator, the town accountant and myself have already met with the departments. This will change, I don't anticipate that it'll change drastically, but it will change because we're having some things re-looked at to maybe combine some projects or rethink some projects and how we can lower some of these costs. But I would not expect a huge change in these numbers, it's just not gonna happen. There, there'll be some, but it's not gonna be eight hundred thousand dollars or some, some large amount that changes that whole thing. And here's our capital budget detail with, typically, we go with two cruises annually. The ambulance is out of the ambulance fund, so two hundred and seventy thousand of that we don't have to worry about for the tax rate at least. And the other miscellaneous things, digital preservation is a holdover from last year. Townhouse is actually a second-floor copier, that's, that's on its way to the graveyard. And MIS, this is the other piece of the permit system that would have to be funded. And this number, I actually think came down, this one, came down a little bit, this is another thing. This is a snapshot in time, this, this, so anything that comes in the last few days or whatnot gets updated a little bit. So it's been tweaked a little bit since this. So the MIS permit system is actually down ten thousand to, to twelve thousand. So that's a little bit of, a little bit of good news. And the overall budget considerations, so here's the real bad news. We knew it was gonna be a tight year with the tax rate. It's come in at, it's actually about eight point two-zero now, was at eight point two-four when this was compiled. It's a fairly substantial increase. Our unused levy, levy capacity, excuse me, drops from two point seven million to about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand or thereabouts. The current estimates do not include any funding for the recreation field improvements, nor funding for any golf course improvements. So we are waiting a little bit longer to get more information on that, to integrate that into any budget estimates. Two authorized but unissued loan authorizations, the nine-one-one turf fields, we've already discussed that, and hopefully that'll be paid for through years of fees, so that'll again be off the tax rate. And the water main cleaning for eight hundred thousand, again, will be paid from the water fund, so that's good news, those are just side notes. Unfortunately, this is part of the problem also, nineteen new revenues, one point one million, and additional expenses of three point five million. We have the levy capacity, so we could theoretically pay for all this. It's not about that, it's, it's about, obviously, do you want tax bills going up a certain amount, or do we want them to be restricted down to a certain amount? So getting the tax rate to about five percent would be about a million four, would have to reduce out of this budget, and, and to three percent would be about two point two million. So I wish I had better news on that. We always recommend protecting some of the things we've done, the OPEB funding, that's really important, it's, it's in the health insurance budget again for two hundred and fifty thousand. We're up to about one point two million, I think the balance is. And we're almost done with the actuarial study on that, so you're actually gonna have a meeting on that, even though you don't know it, you will be having a meeting on it in the next month or two, to go over with that auditor, the findings of that. Road maintenance, we know that we cannot touch that this year, that was one thing we spoke with the DPW director about in, in last year, she, she had already known that and warned us. Reserves, limited as they are, I'm not sure what, we don't have a whole lot, so it's about a half a million in stabilization. Levy capacity is considered a reserve, but we don't have as much of that, and, and that's in the next bullet. So we're gonna review the capital for cost reductions, as I mentioned, but we are not going to unnecessarily defer capital, at least in our opinion, to future years, because it's only gonna create a problem next year. You're putting a problem off from this year to next year, and it potentially could be a lot worse. So, but we will look into phasing what we can phase in and possibly changing some of these projects to make them a little more affordable. Additional hours this year, I, I find, I think the optics would look wrong. I, I think it's a hard sell on, across the board. If the board listens to the departments and finds that there is a need or some reason why hours are important, that makes sense, then I think that's, that's okay. But I, but I'll be honest, it's, it's gonna be really hard to justify adding bodies or hours this year, I just, I see that as a problem. So we used to have that restriction, you know, we've actually had a, a run of some, several decent years where the tax rate was, was pretty good, and we haven't had these financial pressures in, in several years. So unfortunately, this board gets to deal with it. Mrs. Vannen, I'm sure remembers, 'cause she was a part of those years, how difficult some of those years were, and, and they were actually worse than this in some, in some years. But we'll get through it. So we'd like, I guess what we're gonna ask the board tonight is not to solve the budget problem, 'cause that's not gonna happen, but we would like just the board's guidance on what their thoughts are as far as where would you like the town administrator and myself and the other finance staff to go with this? Would you like us to put something together that shows a four percent tax increase? Are you okay bringing an eight percent tax increase in front of town meeting, or you wanna do something lower? Where would you like to see this? And, and again, I'll stress, and I don't know if the town administrator agrees with me or not, I assume he does, that these numbers aren't gonna change a whole lot. We'll see, the benefits department, which is a large department, we may end up adjusting some numbers there a little bit. But this isn't gonna be like previous years where there's millions of dollars in swings that just happen. It, we'll, you know, when we go through the capital and all said and done, we could see something on five, six hundred thousand dollars, you know, to the, to the good, maybe. I won't even commit to that, but it might happen. But it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be some huge amount. And, and the problem is, just 'cause I didn't explain it, the problem is, is we had a lot of general fund capital hit this year, it was a large increase. We had the public safety building and those other smaller projects that are gonna come up, be paid in debt next year. So that's the second thing. Usually, we've had a drop in debt obligations the last few years, as you know, but this year, we actually have an increase, so we're going the opposite way. And our free cash took a big hit of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you put all that together with no new revenues, that's why we're facing sort of a, a more dire situation this year. We don't have those questions that we had in previous years. So that's basically where we stand.
Questions for Mr. Ballantyne. Ms. Vannen.
I'll start. The water reserve fund. That covers the personnel too in the department, correct?
Yes.
That, that's educational purposes for the public.
Yes.
Are we anticipating the water rates going up to cover?
We, yeah, we did a study, two ye, two, three, two, three years ago?
They went up in fall sixteen was the last one.
Two ye, yeah, two ye, okay, yeah.
A year.
Yeah.
They went up, they went up two years consecutively.
All right, for all of those that.
With the pro, and, and a part of it's the projects that are going on, that, I think we need to incorporate that into a new study, and, and you're right, relook at the water rates again.
I mean, we, we could be facing water rates going up for those that use water, town water. I'm bringing that up because I have a well, but in fairness to those that pay for town water, I think that needs to be considered. The ambulance fund, I understand that's a separate fund for that purpose. On this sheet, Chief Morrow, it says ambulance twenty-eight and twenty-nine, are you anticipating replacing both? Just one?
Twenty.
Okay. How old is the ambulance that you're replacing? Thank you.
The answer was ten years for those listening on TV, watching on TV.
All right. One of the items for the facilities manager, I support the idea of spending thirty thousand dollars for a design and study of Codville Hall. When would you anticipate bringing the study to build? Yes?
Unless, we're gonna need a microphone if there's gonna be a lot of questions from this table. Mr. Parent, please.
Thank you, Jerome.
We're anticipating construction being fiscal twenty-one.
And the number that's being floated around, whether it's accurate or not, is between three hundred and four hundred, maybe?
I believe I have it down for four fifty off the top of my head, four seventy-five.
Okay. So when we do these things, we have to anticipate that the conclusion is we're moving forward and with that capital budgeted article. The library, I think there was a drainage issue. Is that part of the Main Street Project? If we correct what's out on eighty-five and thirty, or eighty-five north, would that potentially correct this issue with the design of that road? I thought we had discussed that before.
So the Main Street Project is handling the, the, originally, the water was coming through the door for the parking lot, and it was coming off of the parking lot. That is all being resolved through the Main Street Project. What hasn't already been resolved, the last time they got water, it was coming from the, basically from, from this side, from the west and into the building. So I believe that money is to fix that.
It's separate from?
It was just coming in a different spot than it, than it did prior.
And who would have control over these funds, the library or facilities?
Facilities would be overseeing that project.
Thank you. I've been, I've been through this process when times were really tough. I think we're looking at a couple of tough years, and I'm gonna be really cautious about this, that as far as moving ahead and spending money at this juncture, I'm not in favor of any new personnel. I'm actually not in favor of adding new hours to any department. I think we need to wait this out and see what's happening. Eight hundred dollars is a lot of money, and we still don't know some of the revenues until January, so I think the message right now for me, it would be no new personnel, no additional hours, and cutting whatever can be cut in the water department that's gonna trigger water rates to increase in order to cover these things. Or at least bring it to the attention of the advisory board and this board that the water rates are gonna go up with whatever we decide to do here. Before town meeting. That's all I have for questions.
All right, Ms. Schifrin.
The only, I, I guess, observation I have is on the, the recreation improvements and maintenance, I would like to see us try to incorporate some of the short-term improvements that they wanna make, as well as some, in that short-term stuff, as some of the design and planning work for some of the larger projects they have. And then the only question I have is on the levy capacity. Do we know for sure, is there a, a direct correlation between that and our bond rating, or is it just so many factors go into it that you can't tell, or?
Bond ratings like a, like an alphabet soup, so to speak.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in, I'll jump in here, so.
I knew you couldn't wait.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I let you get this far without saying anything, I thought that was pretty good of me. So the, one of the main components in the bond rating increase when we went from a double A plus to a triple A was reserves. And again, as, as, as Mr. Ballantyne pointed out this evening, we're not strong in our reserves. However, we were able to make the argument to the rating company that our unused levy capacity should be treated as savings, or, you know, as reserves, because we do have that ability to tax up another two and, you know, two point two, two point three million dollars. I think it was two point four at, at its height. If we take that down in one year from two point two to two hundred thousand dollars, I can just about guarantee that when we go back for our bond review, we're gonna be knocked back down to a double, a double A plus. And quite honestly, the whole reason we got the triple A was for this public safety facility, 'cause this is gonna be a huge bond. Obviously, you're doing it the first part, you're doing the first seven million dollar piece of it, there'll be another, you know, potentially, you know, sixteen, eighteen million dollars coming after that, and the more we can save on interest, the better your bond rating, the more you'll save, the better interest rate you get, right? So that's obviously why we wanna preserve it, and now we could be put in a position where we could lose it before we even do the permanent bonding for the, for the seven point, seven point seven million.
I guess my question is more, do you have any idea, even roughly, like what the capacity would need to stay at in order to maintain the rating?
No clue. No, I mean, we can have some discussions, I think, with our financial advisor and, and see what she thinks. I think she was a little bit surprised that, you know, with, with the bond rating agency took our argument and improved us to a triple A, you know, that, that was maybe, you know, setting a benchmark, I think, for kind of an approach that we made the argument and they accepted our argument. So I, I don't know where that limit is, but I know that if we drop it down a million, if we drop it down, you know, one point two million dollars or one point five million dollars, it's probably gonna be enough to trigger them saying, you know what, you really don't have the capacity as well as the, the, the hard reserves in order to maintain the bond rating. But we can, happy to have that discussion and come back to you with that information to, to give you an idea of what they think the impact would be and where that breakpoint may be.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brockio.
Thank you. A couple quick questions. I know advisory's looking for a hundred thousand dollars for the, an increase. Can you just take very briefly a minute and just kind of explain your reasoning and, and why you're looking for that increase? Around the clock, one minute.
Thank you, Ms. Brockio. I have to tell you, I fought very hard for that after I had discussions with the town administrator, and also, over the last couple of months, I really stuck my nose into seeing what's going on. And I think the way I approached that advisory, and I did get a majority vote, is in order to take care of the items that are not budgeted. I mean, I have not, I cannot plan when I get sick, I don't plan when my furnace is gonna break, and the budgets are being cut to the bone. And therefore, we have examples that I can give you. We have the septic system right behind us here, seventy thousand dollars, so one smack. The issue is, how is that being funded? And it's not that we're looking for major funds, we're looking in order to take care of the emergencies that people cannot possibly plan for, instead of being blamed for it. And the fund will not be a slash fund, I mean, the issue would be to use it, this, with, with, you know, just be very careful how we look at it and use it where it is needed in case it is needed. Because to keep the blinders on and look at things that come up, and then it is being funded somewhere out of, and I'm just saying, it's the way it works, I'm not gonna tell you, but you know, it gets funded from, well, we take it here and we take it there, and then other things don't get done. And I think it, you know, if we look at a total budget here and discovers all aspects, we're looking at a fifty million dollar budget, we're looking at a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for what I call petty cash in order to take care of emergencies. And it would be more responsible to do it that way than what Albert is done right now. And it would be more responsible to do it that way than what Albert has done right now. And from a finance point of view, that was, our vote was a majority to, to take it and be responsible. Because we will not, it'll not be used unless it is a non-planned item, and it has to be done.
Thank you.
If I could just comment on that, I just wanted to, to say that I think, you know, the finance team as a whole agrees with the position of advisory. If you look at the past couple of years, you know, that fund has been completely spent. Normally, it's used to help cover snow and ice deficits. But when there are unanticipated items, um, you know, it really puts a pinch on that. And the budgets, you know, Mr. Peters is correct, the budgets have been, become tighter and tighter. So therefore, there's not as much turnback as there had been, which means we're getting less free cash. And when something happens that's unexpected, that's really the only place to go. And, and as you saw last year, and, and Mr. Ballantyne pointed that out, you know, we had more unanticipated issues and more snow and ice issue than we could handle through the reserve fund. So, it was decided to make some adjustments at the end of the fiscal year and try to handle the deficit within last fiscal year, rather than carry it into this fiscal year to deal with, which, you know, would have hurt us this fiscal year. So we made the decision, but also, you know, it, it had the effect of reducing the free cash, which, again, as, as was explained this evening, is, you know, why we're lower this year.
Mr. Chairman, may I have one more word on it?
Please.
When we look at all the actions that are planned for this year, there used to be, in the past year, also a fund for consulting services. That doesn't exist anymore. And I am sure we're not done, if I look at the year ahead, for things like, that has to be verified, checked, or maybe looked at designs again. And so we keeping, uh, if it's not agreed to, but I think it's a responsible way to go forward. And that's why we put it in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple other comments. In looking over the capital budget, excuse me, request for the one point six, I see a lot of things on here that I know we've seen come up in, in prior years, especially for the DPW. I would be interested to know, I know on some of these items, but I would like to be interested to know how many of the items that are on this one point six have already been put off in the past?
I can mark them up for you. I, I was actually gonna do that, and somehow we never got to that, but, um, we, we can do that rather than just me reading them off, but, um-
I, I just think it would be useful-
There are, there's several of them from last year.
I know some of them I've seen on here for, they've come up a couple of years, in particular on things. So, I just think it would be useful, i- as another tool to be able to use.
Ms. Bracchio, just one thing I wanna point out, you'll notice on here, you've got the, um, the road maintenance at four hundred thousand dollars. This is the fifth budget, I think, that I've done. And every time that we have the budget, we begin the pro, the budget, DPW puts in four hundred thousand dollars for road maintenance. And I'm not gonna put Mr. Ballantyne on the spot, but the first thing we do, and I was gonna ask you, what's the first thing we do with that number? The first thing we do with that number is reduce it to two fifty, okay? That's our first hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And given, you know, the, the, the status of, of the chapter ninety funds, you know, again, a lot has been expended because the town was required to for the Main Street project.
Yep.
You know, not a lot of road maintenance is getting done. And again, we talk about getting behind on these things. If you get behind, it's very hard to catch up.
Yep.
You know, um, Mr. Ballantyne can identify the things for you in here that were deferred last year, you know, as part of the agreement between the selectmen and advisory. Again, it's hard catching back up again, and, and, you know, and then it's gonna mean we're gonna end up putting other maintenance costs into the budget in order to maintain things that should be replaced in our normal schedule. It should be done as we plan, you know, in the capital plan for. So I just wanted to make that comment.
I completely agree. Sometimes kicking the can down the road in, in the end game doesn't help anybody. I just think it's important for the taxpayers, as well as us sitting on the board, to know so that, again, some of these things have been out here two and maybe three years, if I'm not mistaken, on some of them. And I'm just, I'm gonna pick on the DPW because I happen to know some of those, the snow, the sidewalk plow. I mean, I've seen that come up multiple times. So, I think that would be useful to have as well. And the outside consultants. Mr. Purple, maybe you can answer for me, the, the fifty thousand. Is that for anything specific or just anything that potentially may come up, and it's just like a placeholder number?
No, the town has had a, has had a fund for engineering services. It's been an article that was funded. And quite honestly, and I, I defer to Mr. Ballantyne in terms of timeframe, but it had been around for quite a while and really hadn't been used all that much. But it was used heavily to the point of zero for a lot of the preliminary work that was done for the public safety facility. And it's, it's under the discretion of the Board of Selectmen to approve that money to be used. But, you know, if there's a study that comes up, it's not for implementation services, okay? This is simply for studies or engineering work, to look at something, to, you know, for, for that type of thing. You know, we had put in, you know, for fifty thousand dollars to replenish it. You know, fifty thousand may not be reasonable, but I think that there needs to be something put in there to address, again, getting back to those unexpected, those things that come up that are not budgeted for, that can be addressed through, through that line for engineering services.
Okay. And just, just, I think, one, two other comments quickly. I, I think, for, for me personally, in looking this over, I'm more into necessity versus cosmetic on some things. So if we do have to put some things off, I, I, I would like to, to look towards that direction as well. I, I agree with what my Mrs. Van Affen, Mr. Schiffern had said as well. One final comment, and, um, is on the eight point two, Mr. Ballantyne, or the, the seven ninety-three number. That includes the seven point seven, correct? The, the increase of the tax bill? So this is not, that's not on top of this? The seven ninety-three includes the initial public safety payout?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and I won't blame public safety. The public safety piece of it was about one point five percent-
Okay.
Of that eight point two.
Okay.
So obviously, even if that wasn't there, we'd still have a, a fairly-
Just to clarify, the public safety debt.
Debt.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Yes, okay, no, I just wanted to be clear, not public safety, public safety debt.
Well, just, I think it's important for people at home that may be watching, that may be thinking, oh my gosh, look at this number, and then we've got public safety, some of the debt on top.
Oh, no, no.
The, the initial phase of, of debt is included in that number. Okay, and that's it for me for now, thank you.
So, really no specific comments other than just general? I know as all the departments put these together, each department individually can make a very, very strong argument for increases that they want in theirs, and very logical arguments and decisions and reasons for those. It's when you aggregate them and you see a total eight percent tax increase, and that's when we know that the work has to begin. Guidance from me, uh, you know, you know, close to the two, three, four percent, you know, ideally. Whether we can get there or not, I don't know, but that's, you know, I don't have any other specific suggestions right now on individual things. I know a lot of work is gonna be done by our finance team with Mr. Purple and yourself, and the advisory committee as well. And this board will be scrutinizing things. That's, I think it's good that we have all this information as early as we do.
Yep.
We can get, working on it right away, starting in January. And I know last year, you know, we had that, you know, special town meeting for the golf course issue that took a lot of time and took a lot of energy away from the budget process. Hopefully, we don't have that distraction this year, and we can really focus this, this winter on getting this, this budget and the, and the tax increase down to a much more manageable number. Recognizing that there are gonna have to be very hard decisions made, and, you know, tough decisions given to those departments that have put in very reasonable requests in their minds, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. So I think I'm in agreement with the comments made by others. I, I do think we just have to, we'll continue to identify any areas for possible improvement. And if that means phasing in some of the capital investments, so be it. I think that's probably the, the biggest ticket item from my perspective. The, uh, you know, the, the differential between revenues and expenses is what it is this year. And it's, and, and we, we don't, I don't wanna see us sugarcoat it, I don't wanna see us hide, hide the ball. It's an awful year in terms of what the prospective tax increase is gonna be on all of us. And, um, but if we, as, as other members have stated, if we do things to mask that, it's only gonna cause problems in the next year. So I think it is what it is this year. We explain it, we do our best to continue to ensure that it is as lean a budget as, as it can be while we provide services to the residents that they're, that they should be receiving. And, but it is gonna be what it is this year. I think my priorities remain to fully fund our public safety. Police and fire, they do a great work for this town, and we need to ensure that the public safety is maintained. That, to me, is always number one, as well as our exceptional schools. You know, that is, uh, you know, the results continue year after year. I think some, uh, some new numbers just came out recently where Southborough stacks up against, and including Northborough, where, where our kids stack up against others in the Commonwealth. And, and our kids stack up incredibly high. And so those investments pay off in the education of our kids. And I think that is a priority. We need to identify ways to increase revenues. And if that means redoubling our efforts in terms of economic development and bringing in responsible business to Southborough to ensure that there's a, there's an additional avenue for revenues. We had a large employer, CAS, leave Southborough. That was, that's incredibly problematic, and that facility remains unused to this day. So, um, and, and I, and I also agree with Mr. Schiffern that while we don't have it in this budget yet, recreation is gonna look for some funding at town meeting. And to the extent that we can resolve that prior to town meeting, so that there's not a, a long drawn-out battle with recreation at town meeting, I think that is gonna be important. And, and if that means investing in those improvements, to me, the, the improvements that are primary are those that have a, um, an immediate safety impact towards our kids. So there's, I, I have to believe there is some accommodation that can be made to ensure that those public safety improvements can be made and funded and agreed to so that there's not a, you know, a, a fight at town meeting regarding that. There's also gonna have to be a, a new clubhouse that's gonna be built. And if that, that may be a different warrant article for the golf course. We have to do that, otherwise, as, we run into the potential for an interruption in those services that so many have been accustomed to having. And, and, and our intent all along is to ensure that the golf course remains running and active and vibrant while the public safety facility goes up. So, those are my thoughts, comments. Mr. Purple?
So if I could just make a comment on that, I, I agree. I agree that golf and recreation need to be part of the overall picture. But I'm not sure, you know, given that everything is fairly new, I think those, you know, to, to try and put them, and I could let Mr. Ballantyne comment as well, but to try and stick them into our capital process, you know, I, I think Ms. Bracchio, you know, we talked about the capital items that have been pushed down the road that have been planned for, you know, is gonna push things, push other things out of the way. I think they're probably gonna end up being separate articles, but we'll have to consider them in terms of the overall financial picture. That's, that's just, you know, the finance team has talked about, you know, given where we are in the process, you know, do we wanna go back and try and revamp the capital budget for this given year and have to start shifting and moving everything else around that things have been planned for? You know, we, we can have that discussion further, but I think that those things are gonna end up being separate articles. Two other things, and, and I kinda wanna put the board on the spot a little bit. You know, is there a consensus, and I kind of heard different things from, from each of you, is there a consensus position for some kind of direction for the finance team on new hours and new positions? Do you want, you know, i- is there something that you, you know, you know, that you wanna see in the budget? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, before we come back with a revised budget, I don't wanna bring something back and then you say, oh, you know what? We really wanted to see that new police officer. Or you know what? We really wanted to probably take out the OPEB funding. I mean, I'm trying to get, you know, I don't wanna push, but I'm going to. To try and get some understanding about, are there, are there certain half-dos? Are there certain directives from this board? And again, these directives can change, given, you know, we may have some additional, you know, revenue information. Where health insurance, there may be some wiggle room. But we've got a, we've got a fairly good-sized number, we've gotta work our way down. And I just wanna make sure that when we come back with things, it's going to address the things that you're concerned about, or the things that you don't want in there, or the things that you do want in there, rather than going through the exercise of, of putting something together that doesn't do that.
And I'll start out if I may. So, I like the recommendations that you've put together. I think OPEB funding has to be maintained. And I think in terms of new hours, public safety is, is always a commitment of mine. So, we've already committed to, to that with police, and I think we need to maintain that. But in terms of additional hours or additional hires that are non-public safety-related that do not have an, uh, there's not an immediate, an emergent need for it, then I would agree with Ms. Van Aff. No, this particular year. Others, thoughts from others? Mr. Shea?
I think in general, I agree with that. I don't know that, I, and I had a brief discussion with the police chief about this, and I understand that his reason for the extra officer. Again, at this point, I don't know that I can, you know, a hundred percent say yes to it. I think it's, it needs to be, it needs to go through the vetting process further. And as I mentioned earlier, there are gonna have to be some difficult decisions made, and maybe that's one. Maybe at the end of the day, through the vetting process, everyone agrees that that's an absolute have to, has to have. So, I think we continue with the recommendations as presented and see where we get with it.
Chief, if you have a comment, then we'll go continue down the line. Chief?
Very quickly, I think I'd be letting my people down if I didn't express the thought that I would like the chance to make the pitch for my reasoning for adding that last officer before we make some declarations that we can't retreat from. So, I'd like to do that in a private forum or with advisory, but I would just like the chance to, to put my thoughts forward before we make any decisions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Bracchio.
I agree with Mr. Shea about going forward in the vetting process. But I, I do support, any way possible, keeping the new officer. That's been in the works for the last three years. I, I support that fully. I think OPEB as well, I don't think that's, that's something we should touch in any way. I think that number needs to stay consistent based on where we're at and what we owe going forward. So, on those two items, that's my position.
Thank you, Ms. Schiffern.
Yeah, the only one I have a problem with is negotiating with the police chief on what he thinks he needs to do his job effectively and safely. So, if, if he feels that the officer is needed, then that's the way I would feel.
Thank you, Ms. Schiffern. Ms. Van Aff?
I'm gonna stand firm on adding any additional hours at this point. That's my position. The police, with the exception of a dis, a discussion with the police chief, are you looking for one additional employee or two? Okay.
The answer was one.
All right, thank you. In calculating that out, I think we all need to be aware of what the total cost of adding a new person to any budget is. EDC, we haven't hired that individual yet, correct?
We have not.
We've put it out and no takers?
So it's been ad, so it's been advertised several times. We've not gotten candidates that we feel would, um, would be suitable to, to fill the position. At this time, Mrs. Hale and I have been having discussions with CMRPC about bringing in a contract employee for roughly ninety days to try and provide some bridge.
The acronym stands for?
Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. To provide services, to just come in and, and be able to provide a bridge for, between the employee who has recently left and give us a chance to look at hiring, you know, somebody permanently into that position.
So the salary line is stable.
Yes.
The twenty-eight hundred dollars you're looking for has nothing to do with sta, with salary. The $2,800 you're looking for has nothing to do with sta, with salary, correct?
Right.
So maybe we need to look at postponing designing a new website or see if it could be done in-house with someone else. I mean, if we're gonna look at this seriously, we really need to look at everything and not one thing. The facilities, if I may, John, you have a cost in here of $16,500 for two storage sheds. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So, the additional storage sheds that we know we have on property, where do they show up?
They would be going away. The two storage containers would be going away. The little wood storage shed is in disrepair and is going to be removed. And the other one is not a storage shed. That's a workshop cottage for the facilities department where they actually do repairs and fix things in.
Now you've totally confused me. You're removing two?
The steel metal containers-
You're removing those?
Those would be leaving at that point, yes.
And what is the $16,000 for them?
To purchase two new wood sheds, storage sheds, so we would own them.
In this financial climate, would that be the best value for a dollar instead of keeping the rental this time? I don't like them, but I'm just asking if the trade-off this year would be worth-
I am a firm believer in you buy a house, you don't pay rent. If you're gonna continue paying for something, I believe this is your best bang for your buck, yes.
As a taxpayer, I might disagree.
Your prerogative.
No, no, but I'm, I'm, I'm being serious here. Is this really, is this really the year to be looking at purchasing something when we're talking about a police chief, a police chief's request for additional-
I originally had them on last year and they get pushed off to this year. And if I push them off this year, they'll get pushed off next year. So, yes, it, it's time in my opinion, but it's your prerogative to remove them.
I would like to cut anything out of this budget if it means salvaging a officer for the police department. On, in, every department needs to relook at this list.
Fair enough.
It's a cooperative effort. Thank you.
I'm not sure there needs to be a trade, but that's, that's a discussion we can continue to have.
If what?
I'm not sure that, that there needs to be a trade between storage sheds and police officers.
If, if, no, I said if there's an item on this list of, I call it a merchandise list of things we'd like to have, and we all agree that having a new officer has a value to the community and public safety, then we should reduce these other items where they're not really necessary to hire an individual on a department. I'm just looking for a savings in these lists. And I see items I personally think we need to really think hard about. If we're spending that dollar amount, when are we gonna develop that plan?
So just remember, you're balancing-
I know.
-one-time capital expenses versus a permanent increase in your operational base.
Right.
That, that's all I wanna point out. It's not just hiring an officer and it's a one-time expense. It's a, it's a continuing expense.
But in the purch, in the selling of Fable Hall-
Mm-hmm.
We haven't decided where those funds may go. So maybe those dollars would be best served for the community to go into these small construction projects that need to be done. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, since, absolutely. And since the sale of Fable Hall will result in one-time revenue-
Yes.
It should be put towards one-time expenses such as the capital items.
And that's where I'm going.
Yeah. So, a, and I do wanna point out, you know, and, and I appreciate the input that the board has given tonight. And I think that, you know, that we can use that moving forward. And, and we told all the departments when we went, when we met with them, nobody asked for anything that was unrealistic, okay? Everything makes sense in a vacuum. You know, the police budget makes sense, the IT budget makes sense, the planning budget made sense. Everything that everybody asked for, you know, made sense. It's when, you know, as Mr. Shea said, when you put everything together and you, you put all the pieces and make it, make it the omnibus budget, that was where the issue is combined with the factors that Mr. Ballantyne talked about, you know, last year in terms of some of the declines of the revenue pieces combined with the increase in the debt. That's really why we're sitting where we are at this point.
All right. Any other, do you have your direction?
I do.
Okay. Before we turn to, any other questions before we go to advisory and-
Have we as a board decided where the funds for Fable Hall would end up so that the finance committee will know that that's a set aside sum of money for other purposes?
Is there advice as to where those funds would end up?
Well, I, the mechanics of how they end up, where they end up, I think is, is up for discussion. But the purposes for those funds, as I've stated, should be one-time funds, should be used for one-time uses. So it should be for something, you know, for capital, is, is where those things should be directed.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Peters, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the board of selectmen is the executive branch of the, of the town. Advisory really is the finance committee, if I look at towns defined by the state. The budget is a major responsibility on our shoulders and we will play a major role in it. What happened last year, I would, and I don't think we want to see that again, where at the end of the day, we were looking at the macro figures. In other words, where are we? So, it's really important, in order to, to get this process smooth, that there is agreement as soon as possible on a macro basis. In other words, what are we really looking at here? Are we looking at 3%, 5%, 8%? And that's going to be, I'm speaking as chair of the advisory now. If we can resolve that as soon as possible, that would be the best thing. Because to pick on pennies while we're not looking at the dollars is not gonna, we're not gonna make this work by looking at 5,000 here or 10,000 there. It's, that has to be done in any case. And that will be done. But this is, we're facing something that, that we haven't seen for a couple of years and it will have to be clear cut as to where do we hit here and what can we afford. I do have a comment on, apart from that. So, the first step would be before we get into, I mean, we're gonna look at every department's budget. You know, we're gonna look at, but, but it's not gonna make sense unless we lo, know on a macro basis where we're gonna go. So I'm, I'm, I'll get off the point. That's an urgent need on our side that the executive makes some serious decisions there that we can work from. One of the things that I do have to say is that we have seen in the past, and I can quote Mr. Schiffer, for instance, when, when the lights were done, when I asked him, what would you rather have done? And he said, I would rather have fixed the fields so that they don't flood. I mean, we, they are serious, I would just say, we have to fix what we got before we look at some serious new projects that we have not committed to. It's just a comment that I make. And although we are looking at, at, we're only looking at margins. In other words, what's increasing. If it really comes push to shove, I think we need to do what is necessary and look at it on a zero page. There's what's called zero-based budgeting. And really look hardcore, not only as, okay, this is there, so therefore it stays the same, or it increases a little bit. Look at what we have. And I'm not talking about necessarily staffing, but should we do this or should we not? And that is a different way of looking at it than, than to look at only what's the variance. And if push comes to shove and it really has to be done, I suggest that that gets done. I think we would do it on advisory if it's necessary. And that is just my input. We're gonna have a very tough time. We're gonna be starting on January 10th with the budgets, and we're gonna get into the detailed budgets. And it's not gonna make sense, we, we start working on the detail and we start fiddling with it and it doesn't fit into the picture. And we would, that'll be a waste of time. That's my only comment as chair. As, as advisory, we will face up to it longevity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. All right. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Ballantyne, who's been in the hot seat for a while? All right?
So Kathy Cook, advisory. So, I just wanna piggyback what Mr. Peters just said. We've never done anything like zero-based budgeting. Mr. Purple, from the way you wrote your memo to kinda describe it, it seemed to me like you were pretty surprised by what this, where we've turned out. If you remember last year, it's a special town meeting advisory had done a study where we wanted to basically show the town that we could afford the, the building projects that were contemplated. The new public safety building, possibly new library, possibly new combined community center to, for, for everyone, including the senior center. And we, we did use regression. We went back and looked at past budgets and we ended up with a projected 3.1% in the future operating budget for 30 years. And with that, we still breached $25 that, that you can't breach unless the law gets changed. So we still breached it, but we never contemplated anything near what we're talking about this year. So, let me just remind everybody a couple things. Ms. Faniff, I don't remember anything like this. You said you remember this years ago. I don't remember anything close to a 9% tax, year-over-year tax increase. So maybe you remember it better than I did, but I don't remember anything even close to it. We used to worry about the school budget and they've come in with a very respectable 3, 3.5% increase, which means that the rest of the town, if the school budget is 55% of the total budget, that means the rest of the budget is going up something around 9% to get to what we're talking about here. And that's just not sustainable. It sounds like Mr. Ballantyne thinks this is gonna happen maybe for the next two years. So I don't know what the next year looks like. But I think that, I mean, Mr. Peters is so right. We can't, we can't do anything with 5 and $10,000. We're gonna have to make some really tough decisions here, including things like starting to look at cutting positions that may no longer be needed because of technology, et cetera. I know we don't like to do it, but I think we've gotta start trying to do that every year. And then, more importantly, seniors last year got a 0.5% co-increase in their social security. And we're gonna propose a 9% real estate tax increase? It, it just doesn't make sense. We've proposed, I think 70% of our budget is personnel, something like that, personnel cost. And we've, we've proposed across the board 2.5% increase in that. So maybe that's gotta get looked at too. We've gotta look at some really big things here if we're gonna get this down. But I've never seen anything close to a 9% year-over-year tax increase proposed. I don't know, Brian, if you remember. But, I mean, that is a lot. And especially if you think it's gonna happen the next year too. We've really got to, as a group, I think, really look at some things that would really knock out some big numbers here and keep them knocked out going forward. If we're gonna fund the rec project, if we're going to do other things that we wanna do that we need to be done. We're gonna have to find some way to get some operating expenses out of this budget for, for the next few years that is gonna last.
Ms. Cook, I, I agree a hundred percent with what you said. I have, I have been through this process before, but we used to have in-house management groups. Where a member of the Board of Sloughman would attend those meetings. And we'd start cutting there. With the new structure of the town, we have now left that responsibility to the town administrator. What, it sounds like I'm only asking for $10,000 here and there, but in the scope of my questions, I know what the water receipts pay for. That's why I mentioned the personnel in the department. Each one of my questions has a trigger onto something else. And as advisory board members, you knew, you knew what I was asking, I'm hoping. I'm not in favor of adding any additional people. I'm not in favor of some of these capital items. But I'm one person right now. I, I am concerned. I think we're all concerned. Recreation has needs. That's the purpose of a revolving fund. I mean, if some of these items can be addressed for grass or maintenance to get us through a period, or the fees need to go up, they need to go up. The water rates might go up. I mean, people need to be adjusting their wish lists based on what their own income within their own departments are. And I'm not there yet, but I, I agree with what you said.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. All right. Lots of work still left to be done and, and but I, and I agree with Mr. Peters, the closer, the sooner that we can come to agreement or resolution together as boards and as advisory, I think the better for all of us. So thank you for the efforts to date. All right. Chairman's report, hearing none. Town administrator report?
Chairman, I don't have anything beyond the budget that has really been taking most of my time. I do have one item that just came to my attention. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Do have one item that just came to my attention. Late this afternoon, I had a request from, from Freddie Gillespie, who is chairing the conservation restriction for the golf course committee that this board set up. Per their charge, they are set to expire on the 31st of December. They were intending, and I think we had had the offline discussion, that, that they would come to our January 2nd meeting to present their findings and then to conclude the work of the committee. Sorry. And then the committee, and then the committee, the committee work would be done and then the board would pick, would pick it up from there, working with council. And the request, they've, they've completed their work. They've not yet had a chance to vote on their recommendation and basically to close out their minutes. They're seeking an extension from basically December 31st until January 2nd. That way they can then meet the evening of our meeting, prior to the meeting, vote the recommendation, close out their work, come to the, come to the selectmen, give their report, and basically at that point be dissolved.
So, from my perspective, I have no issue, since we're gonna have them come on the second anyway, that giving them two additional days. But we have to move forward on this and I wouldn't, I would agree for, I would agree to a, to a two-day extension for sure. Nothing further than that. Any comments? Any issues with the, with the two-day extension for that committee? Seeing none. All right. Do we need to vote that?
Yeah, so I need, so I would need a vote of the board to amend the charge for the conservation restriction committee for the golf course to extend the committee until January 2nd, 2018.
And no further, from my perspective. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ma'am?
Just a question. If, if we dissolve the charge and it goes to EE, OEE, whatever, I can never get it exactly right.
Yeah, EEOA?
EEO, thank you. If it goes to EEOA and they come back with changes that they wanna have, if we dissolve the conservation restriction committee, we've limited their role in being, as we've guided them to draft the CR, are we limiting their role in being able to take any feedback from EEOA? I should write it down. EEOA, for any further discussion from them, if we dissolve them?
I do have one comment. I don't believe we, I don't believe their charter was to draft the CR. They were not at all. We have learned at town council, well, as well as a very reputable firm that is actually crafting and drafting the CR. They're, they're providing advice as to what they believe should go into it. And that advice will come to us and then we may or may not, you know, the town council may, may or not agree to that, but they're not actually drafting it.
Well, they're, they're working with councils, agreed, to draft. But if, if the draft comes back from EEOA with comments or things further to change, or there may be issues, their, their charge was specifically to work with councils to come up with the draft, agreed. But my concern is, is based on the changes that come back, if we dissolve them, we're limiting their ability to what we've asked them to do to have further comment on that.
So then I guess my thought was, why didn't we just make them indefinite and they could go on forever? I mean, we have to move, from my personal perspective, I love to hear from the others, but we have to move, it's time to move forward. We can't wait any longer. And we've got town council and, and, and the firm that we're paying to actually do this. They'll take advice. In fact, they can continue to, to receive advice from anyone in the community who would like to give it. But I don't, from my perspective, I don't think that, that committee should go on forever.
And, and I don't disagree, Mr. Klenda, with, with it going on forever. But my concern all along has been that they've had a short window to put together a CR, working with councils, to come up with the CR of the magnitude that the voters voted on at town meeting. And based on them not being put together and being able to start their work until November, I just wanna make sure, and I'm sure all of us do, that it's done and it's done correctly and it's done what the voters wanted. So, that's my only concern. I, I'm, maybe if we don't necessarily dissolve them, end their charge date, we can always come back to it. I don't know what the answer is, but my concern is, if we end it then, there's not any other opportunities for any other comments or for them to be able to get together as a group and collectively come up with, working with councils, because they're, again, how the charge was, was put together. So, again, obviously it's up to the board. Everyone has their thoughts on it and I'd be interested in hearing theirs as well.
All right. So, Mr. Purple, do you have a comment on that?
No, I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait to hear the rest of the board.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. We're in discussion. Ms. Faniff?
I did attend- I did attend only two of their meetings. And I know that, I appreciate everything they're doing. However, I believe their charge was to make a recommendation to this board.
Yes.
So I'm looking for the recommendation. And they do have special counsel at their meetings. And anything that might be outstanding, as of the last meeting that I attended, it sounds like they're pretty close, other than making a recommendation to this board. So I agree with Mr. Kalender as far as, let's get them in here, let's have a deadline. And then if it needs to be discussed further, we can consider it that night. But I think right now we need to get this thing tied up. Counsel's, special counsel's looking for it, town council's looking for it. We need to get it done. CR needs to be approved. And if there are issues with it, we can open it back up.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously?
Yes.
I believe. Okay. Finally, St. Mark's, actually, let's.
We have one of the, yeah.
We, we missed number six, which is the annual renewal of additional alcohol, class 1, 2 common victualers license for 2018. We have a list. Mr. Purple.
Mr. Chairman, these are the licenses, the annual license renewals that were not included on the last list that, but now are prepared for your approval. There were two on here that I do want to note. Well, I will run through them, it's fairly small. You have two class 2 auto dealers, P&amp;H Management Corp. and Right Way Auto Sales. These are renewal, these are all renewals. Common victualers, you have Cold Stone Creamery, Morrow's, Village Cafe, Starbucks, Wendy's Company. You also have a common vic for St. Mark's Golf Club Incorporated. You have a restaurant, Beer and Wine, for St. Mark's Golf Club Incorporated. The reason that I separate those two out, we did have, it was specific with, specifically for the, the beer and wine license. I know that we, you know, are in the process right now. We do have an item on the agenda to discuss, the board awarding the, the management agreement tonight, subject to negotiations. But the, when, when this was all put together, the closing was going to happen last Friday. It got pushed to tomorrow. So therefore we don't own the property yet. Mrs. Esposito in our office has had conversations with the ABCC. And the ABCC had said that you can, you know, approve or renew the license pending the anticipation of the management contract being done by this board. If the contract is not successfully negotiated, the board can then rescind the license and notify the ABCC. That will then come back to this board and will then become an available license. If you don't do that, then they're going to have to go through the entire process of a new application. I know many of you haven't had to, you know, go through that. You know, there's a new application, new core authorization, new financials, vote of the corporate board, business structure, purchase and sale, floor plan. They've got to go through everything all over again, which essentially is, they're doing the same thing that they have been doing. So it, it may be better to, to vote those two items. The common victular for St. Mark's Golf Club and the restaurant, wine and malt, or beer and wine, pending, approve them pending anticipation of the management contract. And, and that would probably be the better way to handle that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Finally, the St. Mark's Golf Course Management Contract Recommendation for Award. Mr. Purple.
Let me just catch up here. So you have before you a, a recommendation from the golf committee on the, the proposal for the management of St. Mark's Golf Course. We did issue a bid earlier this year for continuing the golf services. And New England Golf Corporation was the sole bidder. They are currently the firm that is operating the golf course and have been for a number of years. The, there really was no ranking, because there was only one. They did meet all the bid criteria, was provided to the, to the golf committee for their view. And, you know, their recommendation is that the board award the contract, obviously subject to successful negotiations and also subject to the town concluding the, the land deal, you know, which should take place tomorrow. But I think it's, it's worth putting that in there. The document that was included in the, in the RFP is a, is a draft, as has been looked at primarily more by bond counsel than by town counsel at this point, simply because there were certain things in there that need to be addressed in order to make sure that the bonds for the purchase of the, of the property remain non-taxable. If they're taxable, we're obviously going to pay a little more for those bonds. So, you know, if, if the board does vote to approve this tonight, I would recommend that, you know, there'd be one or two members of this board who would like to be involved in the negotiations with, with New England Golf. And at this point, I'll leave it there.
So I would like to move the recommendation as stated by Mr. Purple and ask if there's a second, and then we'll discuss.
Second.
Okay. So for discussion, I think it's, obviously, the ranking is there, one. And they've done it for a long time and, and, and I believe they've done it well. And I have no reason not to move forward with them. Is there, that's my suggestion and an opinion. If we do that, are there members who would like to participate in those negotiations? Ms. Fannin, are you raising your hand?
Well, I would do like to do that, but I have questions about this document.
Okay.
If you don't, I'll run through them quickly. On page one, it makes reference to the golf course committee, which was evaluating these, I assume. On page five, it says, under the award, the golf course advisory committee will evaluate the qualifications. So I don't know who that committee is, if it's one and the same or if there's an error. And further in the document on page seven, it says, the evaluation committee considers. So I think there needs to be clarity, who did what and when. If there was no evaluation committee and it was just because we had one applicant, I think it needs to be clearer. On page nine, general background information, the operator is expected to maintain temporary facilities, operator is expected to make the necessary changes to keep the course viable. I think that needs to be defined with the expectations of any future funding that might come up within before town meeting, as to what that actually means. I'm kind of puzzled by it. And on page 11, 14-1, says that the, there'll be an annual, set annual percentage that the town will receive from miscellaneous sales, retrieval, range fees, rental carts, driving and other things. Does that include the wine and the malt that may be sold on that premise?
I'm sorry. So the question in terms of, is that included in the revenues?
Percentage of gross income.
Yes. Any, you know, any sales of equipment, food? Beer and wine is all included in your gross revenue.
All right. And the permit that we just authorized says restaurant. I don't believe it's a restaurant that they have there.
That's the state's term, not mine.
All right. But it, it's not a restaurant.
Correct. It's not. It's a pouring, it's a pouring license. So yes, you're actually not, you, you know, it's not like a package store. You've got a package store license and a pouring license, but they term, the state terms it a restaurant.
And I think it needs to be very clear that this clubhouse, pro shop facility, is not a restaurant. It has a certain amount of occupancy and it doesn't expand its use. Because I don't believe we're having a commercial septic system or any of that stuff.
I, I don't believe, no. I mean, there is no ability within the shared septic system to do anything like that. There is no intent to increase the use or anything beyond what it currently is.
And as long as, and that needs to be defined in this agreement, really tightly. Because there's a, the term event is, needs to be defined so that it doesn't grow and we can't pull it back in, because nobody ever defined what an event is. I think it's a great idea, but I think we need to really be clear on what, what this agreement is saying for the residents. The parking is being designed for a certain facility adjacent to another, well, two facilities on each side of it. So if it's, if it's an event and it's small and the expectation is that they're having a golf event, that's different than saying, we're having an inside event that we can't accommodate, which will trigger other issues. Just a heads up.
Right. Now, when I, but, but to your point, if you're having, understanding the, you know, whether you want to call them limitations or whatever, of the parking, if you're having a, you know, a golf event, an outside event and everything that is going to exceed the parking, how are those issues going to be addressed? What is the second, what is the plan?
Correct.
For those things? And those are all things that should be included, you know, in the management agreement that is negotiated by this board with New England Golf. The purpose of, the purpose of this vote tonight, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of this vote tonight is simply to allow the, is to make the award so that negotiations can begin. And then at some point, there is going to be a management agreement brought back before this board for approval.
Correct.
All right. We're not, we're not agreeing to this draft.
I know you're not agreeing to it, but it's on the town's website. And if we're going to, we should accept questions, if there are public questions, as far as what we're looking at. And if, if the advisory board also has questions, it's important that they inform us sooner than later. Because I think at times we're not quick to tell them what's happening either.
I, I think the other issue too, that you need to, the reason why I think this needs to get moving is because there are things that are going to have to happen with that course in order to make it ready and viable for play in April.
Correct.
Okay? And the board needs a partner, so to speak. So you need somebody to manage that and somebody to say, hey, we need to get these things done. And how are we going to get these things done? What are, you know, suggestions, recommendations? How can we make this happen? So I, I think it's, I think it's important for this to be the next item on the agenda.
Yes.
The, the public safety stuff is moving along, you know, but, but this stuff needs to, needs to keep moving as well.
Okay?
Tightly.
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 All right. Motion's been made, seconded and further discussion?
Just one, one quick comment. Under Article 10-1, it says, because the town assumes ownership of the course, the operator will not be responsible for tax payments to the town. Historically, these payments have been on the order of $80,000. In lieu of these payments, the operator is expected to make changes to keep the course viable throughout construction. Perfect. Except under 15.1, it says, since a successful proposer will not have any interest, no real estate taxes shall be due on any of the real property which makes up the facility. Is there a way we can add in lieu in there? It's kind of conflictive.
So you're reading the RFP document, okay? We're not negotiating the RFP document. We're, we're negotiating the contract. So, you know, with those understandings, those are all issues that are going to have to be handled. Yeah. So those, those would, would all be handled through negotiation. So if you do approve this, then I would strongly suggest that you obviously identify who would like to be sitting at the table to be handling that.
I agree.
I would love to see Mr. Shea volunteer for this. He is a great negotiator.
Let's see if we have an award of contract, at least an award, and then we'll negotiate the contract. So.
I just had one question, sorry. Given the nature of this business and where we're located, is it normal that we only got one response? Or is that maybe an indication of something or?
So I think it's an indication of the fact that we're going to be disrupting that course for two years. And I'm not sure that, that, we did have a couple of other people, you know, pulled proposals, but did, or pulled bid documents, but didn't, you know, return anything. And I think, you know, somebody who doesn't have an understanding of that course at all and have a familiarity with it, and coming into a situation where what you see now is not going to be what you're going to be operating under for two years and trying to make that financially viable. I, I think that may have been, you know, the reason why you only got one. Once it's reconfigured, once there's public safety there, once that's kind of burned in, next time around, I think you may see, you may see some more interest.
Okay. Thank you.
And we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Who would like to be a representative on this? I'm seeing.
I think Mr. Schiffer.
Mr. Schiffer being volunteered.
Mr. Shea would be great.
I think Mr. Schiffer would be outstanding. Who else would like to join the fun?
We'd have to have a meeting if there were more than two.
I'm sorry? Yeah, that's correct. So, Mr. Shea and Ms. Bracchio, who want to arm wrestle for it?
I think Mr. Shea would do a phenomenal job. And where he's had the experience with some of the negotiations for St. Mark's, I think you have a little bit more background that I have good trust in and good faith in. If you would be willing to.
I would.
I would appreciate it.
All right. There's the two.
Perfect.
All right.
Mr. Schiffer and Mr. Shea then?
Yes, it is.
That's the two.
All right.
Two Bs.
The Bs and the Es. Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Before we move to executive session, any public comment?
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think we'll be great at it.
Timlet, 148 Woodland Road, looking again for an update on the municipal technology committee appointments.
Mr. Purple.
So I've been collaborating with, with the superintendent. I believe that the, the interested parties from library, Board of Selectmen and school committee are going to be meeting later this week to, to review all the applications. And then I believe we'll be scheduling interviews. I probably would anticipate, not going to have something ready for January 2nd, but our meeting on January 16th.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything posted. I presume these are public meetings. I'm a little concerned and I sent you folks a note late this afternoon.
Just got that this afternoon.
Well, I didn't write it until late this afternoon. That, you know, this has been dragging out for quite some time and it's beginning to get to the point that I'm not sure the committee can do the things it's been chartered to do by town meeting, you know, if we, if everything keeps slipping. So as I've said before, if, if I can help in, in an informal capacity, I'm willing to do that. But I really think it's important that this get prioritized and not continue to slip.
Anything further? Sir, please.
Dick Cruciani for Ted Lane, also a worker at the golf course. And I just wanted to comment to Mrs. Fannin on, I believe under the liquor license, we have to serve like hot dogs and whatnot. Okay. I think it's a state requirement. Maybe that's why it's, it's considered a restaurant. And we do candy, we do hot dogs. We don't make any money selling the hot dogs. Generally, generally they're well eaten by the help. And as far as events, we don't, we have never had events that we supplied food to, okay? There are occasionally tournaments and they'd have a tent and somebody would have an individual come in and run a barbecue or something like that. Probably the biggest event we have is the Favel A. And they go back to their own facility for their, their meal, okay? That's all I had to say. I want to thank you very much, first of all, for purchasing the land. And secondly, I think you might be preserving my job, providing the negotiations go well. And I'll have a nice holiday.
Thank you, sir. You too.
You too.
If I can, to crush. I'm not trying to restrict you. I'm trying to find out what you do so it can be incorporated.
Yeah. I understand.
Okay.
I just, I know we have, I know personally, but they have to go and have a food thing and the whole bit. You have to be certified by the state. And I believe you have to serve something with the liquor license, that's all. Okay?
Sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just last word. Just as a reminder, the, the townhouse, the town, most of the town buildings are going to be closed on December 25th and 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday. And more importantly, normal transfer station hours for, through the holiday. So there'll be normal transfer station hours, no changes, bring your trash early and often.
All right. Thank you. The board will now move into executive session. We'll be entering into executive session per Master of the Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, and not returning to open session. Issue to discuss is considered purchase of real property, Main Street easements exemption 6. As the chair has determined that having discussion in open session may be detrimental to the public body's negotiating position, requires a roll call vote. Kalender.
Shea, aye.
Rush, you aye.
Schiffer, aye.
We're in executive session.